Reminder, this this meeting is being recorded for public posting. So, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll? You're muted, Merrill.
Sorry. Board Member Gallegos?
Present.
Member Calvert?
Present.
Member Nixon?
Present.
Member Reinhart?
Present.
Chair Zerkey?
Present.
Member Weinberger?
Present.
Councilmember Sierra?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, so consideration of minutes of previous sessions, do we need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of April 28?
Yes.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Merrill, you're on mute.
I'm noisy taking notes, I'm trying to stay on mute. Who made the motion?
Amy.
Amy, thank you.
So. And who's that?
I'll second it.
Who's that?
Mr. Nixon.
Thank you.
And Merrill, do you call the vote?
Yeah, I have to call the vote.
Okay.
Ready? Is there any discussion or anything? Okay, so we are voting. We are voting to approve the minutes first for the regular board meeting on April 28. Okay. Member Gallegos?
Yes.
Member Calvert?
Yes.
Member Nixon?
Yes.
Member Reinhardt?
Yes.
Chair Zerkey?
Yes.
Member Weinberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Sierra?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, 3B minutes of the special board meeting of May 12th, we have a motion to approve those.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the May 12th minutes.
Second, is that Hugo?
That was Blake.
Blake, sorry.
Diane seconded it.
Thank you. Okay, we will now vote to approve the meeting, the minutes from the special board meeting from May 12th. Member Gallegos?
Yes.
Member Calvert?
Yes.
Member Nixon?
Yes.
Member Reinhardt?
Yes.
Chair Zerkey?
Yes.
Member Weinberger?
Yes.
Too busy in Hawaii, huh? Councilman Sierra?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Okay, we have a slight change in our agenda today. Our presenter, Mark Tompkins, has to leave at 4 o'clock, so we're going to move item 4C up on the agenda, so he'll be giving us a presentation on tax increment and sub area.
Before Mark starts, I just want to introduce this update real quick. So on May 12th, we had a working session on tax increment financing. And one thing we discussed was that the Inglewood DDA today can utilize and collect tax increment if city council passes a resolution to do so. And so the board directed the consultants to explore two options. One was to analyze collection of property tax in the medical district and the other was to analyze collection of sales tax in the South Broadway District. So Mark's here to give a brief update on where he's at with that analysis.
Mark and Hillary, before you guys move forward, just a little bit of clarification, do we need to make a motion to move an item up in the agenda? And Dan, I guess that's the question for you.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think it's within the discretion of the chair to change it around. I think that's fine. I mean, you can make a motion. I mean, typically, we would make a motion to, you know, to make that change. So yeah, so I would suggest that you do make for the reorganization of moving item 4C up before A. And then doing a roll call because it's virtual.
Okay, I make a motion to move item 4C to up in the agenda.
Second, Dan.
Who was that?
Brad.
Okay, we have a motion to move 4C up to 4A. Okay. Member Gallegos?
Except.
Member Calvert?
Yes.
Member Nixon?
Yes.
Member Reinhardt?
Yes.
Chair Zerkey?
Yes.
Member Weinberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Sierra?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Good afternoon, everybody. Hillary, thanks for putting this map up. I think this is really kind of the preliminary thoughts, the white boundaries that you see here, the vertical white lines are really what the initial plan of development envisioned as far as sub areas. I think folks have seen that before. As we started, yeah, so you've got kind of city center on the west, the Broadway District kind of in the middle there, and then the medical district on the east side. And again, the white boundaries kind of denoted those initial thoughts of those sub areas. As we really started looking at it more, the, it started to feel like the gaps, that gap area between the leftmost white line and kind of the first black jogged line there really fits more with the, with the kind of big box retail that we're seeing grouped around the Walmart area. And it really is something that the expectation is there's going to be some kind of redevelopment occurring and reinvestment occurring in those bigger parcels in a timeframe that really is much different than what you might see along South Broadway. And also when we think about the sales tax impacts of if we do have anything change in those big box properties, that could have a negative anchor impact on what happens along the Broadway corridor as well. And so it felt like from both a land use and similar characteristics and zoning that's going through the city right now, it was more appropriate to group those parcels kind of all over on the city center side and then kind of skinny up the boundaries, if you will, to really have the South Broadway corridor reflect kind of very similar land uses in that area. And then likewise, the eastern boundary there, the old white line, really, if you look at the area being circled by the cursor right now, that's the Safeway Shopping Center and the inline retail, so it very much again feels like it fits less in the medical district and more along the commercial corridor of South Broadway, that that's a more similar land use. And so we were saying, well, really, let's put those like uses together and not have kind of outliers orphaned in any, in any district that's not sort of as similar as its use. So those are the proposed kind of changes geographically to those sub areas. I'll pause there. Any questions? All right, we must be making some sense.
Hey, Mark, as a quasi consultant, can I just add on to your comments and mention these two changes would actually be consistent with in the medical district, the underlying zoning which ends at Downing, and then I should say at South Logan, excuse me, and then the rezoning of the city center area, which would take this city center rezoning up to that black line. So there's some natural logic from a zoning perspective to these two changes as well. And then I'm sure you're going to explain that we'll return with more finalized recommendations probably at the next meeting.
Yes.
I have a question. Have they always been envisioned to be more kind of north-south dividing lines? Or was like, for example, the areas of commercial south of 85, has that ever been envisioned to be carved out of the city center area? So that's again, different zoning on that side, kind of maybe different expectations for redevelopment.
A good question, Blake. You know, we kind of, we kind of envisioned that those areas south of 285 would start to take on the character of city center as it's, as it's redeveloped. And we're already starting to see a good amount of activity over there, redevelopment activity that will significantly upscale the area and bring more residents into the area. So really adding to the mixed-use nature of the entire city center district.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, and I'm just jumping in here as, as looking at that south side as well as looking at the in-between lines now, which is property that we own and control. We've always envisioned it as a redevelopment that ties together with city center and how it makes city center more pedestrian friendly to get around. And it's a connectivity piece between your city center and your South Broadway and Medical District. And I think that something that was lost previously in not straightening Inglewood Parkway and kind of creating a main stretch to get through right there was the pedestrian nature to be able to take the light rail and let's just say walk to South Broadway. And I think in looking at this, there's a big aspect of that. And I think that there's a big aspect of that on the South Broadway stuff, Blake, right now where you're looking at as mixed-use and industrial and hodgepodge, but in the future, I think it's residential and retail and a lot of people living in this area. And I think the connectivity of how you get from the light rail and the city center down to those areas in a safe way is, is an important factor to help activate that south side to be more than the hodgepodge it is today. One question, Dan, as you look at the retail just south of, you know, on Delaware, Cherokee, like let's just say from Alati to Cherokee, there's, you know, a hodgepodge of retail that continues to extend towards Broadway that doesn't seem like it's included in this commercial property zone, but there's a lot of commercial property right there. And I'm, you know, I, just in knowing owners of property over there, I think that it, it seems like it should be part of this conversation too. It's like, why skip out on a little chunk of the retail there? And they have a little different set of rules.
Yeah, that's a good question, Hugo. I mean, we went through a fairly detailed evaluation of all the parcels that were included, and there was a lot of discussion about every one. I, to be perfectly honest, I can't recall why that little area was not included. And I'll try to go back and see if I can find that and have that information available as we continue.
I have a question as well. So these, these are, I mean, this is a little more intuitive in the way I think most of us perceive the area, but we can just, we can just arbitrarily change this. I mean, so is that something that's going to be, we could do this maybe again in six, seven years if things change? I mean, we can redraw these lines as needed?
So what we can do today, because the Inglewood downtown plan is in final draft form, we can update the text pertaining to the sub areas.
Okay.
And then, then proceed with approval by the board, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council. If we wanted to amend the plan in the future and in subsequent years, that's possible too. But we need to at least start out with some clearer boundaries around these sub areas because that starts to inform the tip strategy.
And just for clarity, we can't add properties to the DDA boundaries. Is that correct?
No, we can, we can.
Can.
There is a procedure for doing that, that is set forth in the DDA statute, so that can be done over time.
Okay.
If you'd like, I could take a little quick snapshot zoomed in on those properties and share that with everyone later. But I, there could be good reason of how it was structured, but I mean, it's a liquor store and a vape shop and other retail that would potentially make sense to have some, some play in the redevelopment.
I guess Amy's question, you know, reminds me that if you guys feel comfortable with these sub areas today, we would then go ahead and adjust the text in the downtown plan and bring it to you in June for approval.
Can I make a motion to vote on these new proposed sub areas?
We don't need a motion. The idea is that the report, which hasn't been adopted yet, it's just been proposed, would be modified, and then it will be presented and voted at the next meeting.
Got it.
So, and can I just ask for clarity then? So these areas that we're talking about, questioning why they're not included, we would have the opportunity at the next meeting to discuss that further?
We could discuss modifying the boundaries, not the part that someone mentioned about adding in other properties.
Yeah, let us, Diane, try to find what the original rationale was as it relates to that area, and then we'll have as needed, some additional information on what it would take at future dates to add property.
Yeah, I was curious about in the medical district too, for, I think it's Brookdale, I don't know the name of that high-rise facility there. I keep, I'm assuming because it's not red, it's not included in the medical district. Is that correct?
Correct. And there was a, we had a specific rationale for excluding existing residential, large existing residential that wasn't a likely candidate for redevelopment in the near term.
I need to ask Dan, the attorney, that the actual, the properties that are currently included in the district were set forth by a city ordinance creating the DDA. So if we added properties, would that require an additional ordinance?
I believe it would, yeah. But let me, let me confer with Hillary, and I can give you kind of a more confidence on that.
Okay. Yeah, it's not something that we would do sort of with ease. It has to be a pretty considered decision that then gets codified legally.
Right.
Mark, did you have any further comments on sort of the preliminary analysis to date?
Yeah, just real quick. Went back and looked at the medical sub area and the kind of construction and/or projects that have been announced in that area. And in looking at the, the amount of change that's on the near-term horizon, preliminary analysis would indicate about $500,000 a year of annual tax increment could be generated in the next two to four years. And, and the reason that there's sort of an imprecise window there is there is a lag because the county assessor goes through their assessment process, and they need to value properties as they exist at January 1 of every year, so. And because Colorado property taxes are paid in arrears, they're paid the following year, that the revaluations that everyone's seeing this year are for, as their property sat January 1 of 2021, and then it'll be paid in 2022. So there, we could see some portion of that 500,000 in 2022. And then it will kind of mature and level off at around that number, just based on kind of what we see in the pipeline today. And then there was 232 units of apartments announced that are not under construction yet, and that would add another about $300,000. So in, in the next five years, you could see line of sight to about 800,000 a year in property tax increment generated from activities in the medical district. Any further out than that starts to get a bit fuzzy. My crystal ball gets fuzzy, so if anyone else's is clearer than mine, please chime in and we'll fold that into the analysis. And then, so that's the medical district and what we've done there. In the, in the sales tax increment for South Broadway, that's a little murkier. And the reason it's murkier is because there's this tension, for good reason, in, in the amount of data that is easily accessible for us in, in kind of understanding what those levels of merchant activities are. The city's finance department has been able to give us the aggregated numbers, but of course, there's a deeper dive that's necessary to see how many of those merchants have gone dark. What do they believe their prospects are kind of post-recovery and what their expected volumes would look like? And so we're still working with the city's finance department, and then they will be consulting with the city attorney's office on the amount of information and transparency that we can have to those sales tax dollar data, so we can start to put some better forecasts together for that corridor. And of course, when we went back to them and told them we were changing what property is in and out, it's a fairly manual process right now, and so they need to go in and start to reshuffle the, the numbers that they've put together previously. So it's a little slower than just going into easily accessible public data and aggregating it. So we're underway with that. We hope that we will be able to, in the next 30 days, be able to come back with better information for this group, but it, it could be further out than that on the sales tax information.
Mark, is there any kind of figure that you can put out?
Well, my, my instinct is just that with this cluster of merchants that are a good mix of service, dry goods, you know, those kinds of things, that it was around, I think 1.2 million was what 2020 volumes were. You know, I feel like just with upticks in food and beverage and people kind of circulating more, I think that you could see, you know, $1 to $200,000 in sales tax increment kind of generated from that, that area. But that's really a rough guess right now. I don't know how many businesses have gone dark. I don't know how long it'll take to re-tenant those spaces if there are big vacancies. I'm just not familiar enough intimately with all the merchants operating on that corridor to have a, a better idea at this point.
More than likely, the two that are the primary anchors of that district are the King Supers and Safeway, correct, that really drive a lot of the revenue?
Well, grocery, food sold for home consumption
Oh, that's right.
is not taxable. So grocery stores typically have about 20% of the volumes that they do are taxable, and the other 80% is not taxable.
Mark, you've mentioned only property tax in the medical district and only sales tax in the Broadway corridor. And you help us understand why we wouldn't want to do both in both sub areas?
That's a great question. There is, so again, remember you guys, I'm a numbers person. And so for me, I want to see something on the horizon that will actually generate revenue. And so in the medical district, I feel like there's not a big concentration of retail, and this is where I'd like to get better information from the city's Department of Revenue on elective surgeries, because there is sales tax on medical goods that are sold through, through some of the activities of a hospital. And so I'd like to get my arms around what that volume looks like. And so I just don't have a lot of clarity without that information to say, oh, and you should start your very limited 30-year clock on retail sales tax based on what we see on the horizon right now. There are pros and cons to it. Again, as a, as a numbers guy, I would love to see an event that would generate that kind of increment on the horizon. And then I think that's when you really get serious about starting a 30-year clock. But there's also the flip side to that, which is what is the right opportunity to set those areas? So that way you can capture that unknown future activity. The stars have to align for, for different public bodies to vote to accept these things and to start these clocks, and those are issues that you guys have to weigh. But we'll get better information about sales tax in the medical district in the coming days and weeks. And then for property taxes, Hillary and Dan asked me to kind of look at South Broadway, since I haven't spent a lot of time thinking about it. And as I went in and looked at it, when, when you look at government-owned properties, you look at grocery stores that don't like to give up their surface parking lots, and property that's owned by like mountain states and tax-exempt organizations, there's some archdiocese land, and there's also some churches that are in that area. It didn't look to me like there were obvious parcels that would be in the near term undergoing a lot of investment in the real estate. And I could be dead wrong, but just kind of looking at county records, it didn't seem to me that there was a lot of things on the horizon that you would definitely want to start a sales tax increment clock today in that area. So that, that's the rationale, Erica, that is floating through my head right now. It all requires further analysis.
Mark, is there any chance that you have a projection of what our 2022 income would be, or 2023 income would be based on these two initiatives of doing the property tax and the sales tax in these two districts?
I believe that the medical district, you would see just under 500,000 in 2022, based on what I see in the assessor's records today. Now, those are preliminary values and property owners are free to protest, so that could go down between now and when collections actually occur. But I think that that would be around, you know, 450, 475 of property tax increment from the medical district. I don't have a good feel for, for the sales tax on South Broadway for all the reasons I articulated before. You know, you could see up to a 20% bump if no merchants have gone dark, and if they all benefit from a post-pandemic uptick in activity. That would be, in my opinion, the best-case scenario.
Hey, Mark, just to clarify, your projections for the medical district did not, if I remember right, include any assumptions about coming capital projects for Swedish?
Correct.
Which there will be a couple that are significant, that could add quite a bit of value to your projection.
Yeah, those are just further out, I think, than Brad was asking for next year and the following year. I would think anything of substantial size with a hospital expansion would probably be a few years away from the tax rolls.
Okay.
I just remind the board that, that we're talking initially about DDA operational costs, but we're also looking at long-term ability of the DDA to reinvest in downtown projects and particularly invest in large-scale, multi-year projects and improvements if debt authorization is approved this fall.
And Mark, can I just follow up with Brad's question? So you said you would expect us to receive about 500,000 a year in property taxes in the medical district. And if we were to assume that everything stayed exactly the same as it did in 2020, which we know it won't in the Broadway District, then we would be looking at about 1.2 million in sales tax there. Did I hear correctly? No.
No, the 1.2 is the existing volume, and so that'll be your base. So you have to perform over that before you would get any revenues. And so that's where I was saying you might see a 20% bump in the best-case scenario, so maybe a couple hundred thousand. And that, again, is, all those merchants have survived, and all of them see a 20% increase over their 2020 volumes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Well, I appreciate folks rearranging their agenda for my limited window of time here, but I I'm gonna need to sign off, but this this is a really exciting moment, and I was actually pleasantly surprised with what near-term revenues are available to the DDA. Usually, these things take years and years of momentum and and kind of slogging it out for you to have available cash flow to put into programming. And I think you're in a very unique position to be able to take advantage of some some pretty immediate revenue generation that you can start to undertake the DDA's goals with. So I think it's an exciting moment.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, everyone.
Get your time. And is there any further discussion about Mark's presentation before we move on among the board?
I just have a question. Do we have a timeline amongst ourselves about when we want to start setting these things?
We should talk about that. From my perspective, we want to do it as soon as possible. What do others think?
Well, my preference would be for us to do the medical district one probably as soon as possible, given the fact that that one's a pretty easy and easy get for us. The one for the downtown sales tax area, maybe we ought to give him, you know, a couple months period of time to figure out what kind of increment we're actually going to get out of that so that we can make more informed decision. But as I'm assuming, we have until the kind of the end of the year to make the the choice so that the tax increment financing for twenty twenty-two is available for us in that area. That's and that I guess that's a question for a point of clarification.
Yeah, there's city council has the final approval, so we have to back in back their process out. Right now, we're we're scheduled to start briefing city council later in June and then go to them in July with proposal after you guys have discussed a proposal and possibly approved it. If you haven't approved it, it doesn't move on. But we're we're trying to kind of get this in the pipeline, because the next big decision is whether to have a debt authorization election in November, and and we really need city council to be, you know, briefed on that, too.
So sooner than later.
Hopefully.
And I just need a little bit of clarification from something we spoke about in our previous meeting. So let's say that we go ahead and we all agree that property taxes in the medical district is where we should start. But those monies gained from that, we could reallocate to the other centers, the other spots? Or did someone say during the last meeting that we ethically need to consider if we need to put that money back into where the section is coming from?
So the the downtown plan is is written to provide the DDA with maximum flexibility. So you guys will be able to determine how you want to reinvest funds.
I think the only, just as a reminder of what was said last meeting, and I think it's in line with what Hillary says, is just keeping in mind, this came from Hillary Graham. Just keeping in mind fairness, like, don't collect it all from sub-area A and spend it all on sub-area B. But for example, if you wanted to work on making the path right or something, and it goes through an area that's not part of those two sub-areas, that's fine. So you have a lot of flexibility, as long as it's not like completely unreasonable. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any other thoughts or questions about the TIF? Before we move on?
Erica, if I might, on behalf of Mark, just throw a couple of comments in there, and one is in response to Brad. I think generally, Brad, I think the idea is sooner, as as Amy probably stated, sooner is is better than later. And we have some timing elements, because once you all approve the downtown plan, then it gets sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission to basically they review it and provide their comments and recommendation to the city council. And city council then holds one public meeting before they vote on it. So, you know, there's there's some timing elements in there. Our hope is subject to, you know, any concerns that the DDA board may have, is to brief city council generally on where we're headed with these sub-district considerations at our meeting on June twenty-first and then indicate to them that you all will be making the final decision on that as we gather this additional financial information. And then the other thing I wanted to just comment on, because it's been the subject of a lot of conversation with city council, is there's you know, there's kind of a general concept, and a lot of things need to fall into place that early revenues of the DDA could be really utilized to the benefit of all by helping to unlock the early redevelopment of city center. Because that helps draw, you know, a lot of people to the downtown area. Our hope is that, you know, that would allow for major connectivity improvements between the station, you know, South Broadway and the medical district. So that, you know, the idea there, subject to consideration of the fairness and the equity and how it benefits all, is that, you know, there very well may be some discussion about tapping early revenues in a in a, you know, I'll just call it a disproportionate way to unlock the early public improvements at city center. And we'll just, you know, a lot needs to be determined there, but I just want to be transparent as it relates to prior conversations with city council.
So am I understanding at the next meeting, you'll bring figures for at the next DDA board meeting, you'll bring figures, and we will, at that point, hopefully be able to make a decision on sending a resolution to council for them to approve?
That's our hope, Erica. That's, you know, but we have some, just as Mark said, trying to unlock some of this data is really a challenge. So that's our hope.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions, discussion on this topic? Okay, we'll move to for a operational plan. And we've discussed this prior. Is there any additional discussion?
Do you want me to pull it up on the screen, Erica, or no?
Sure.
Okay.
And did you want to say anything about it, Hillary, before we?
Um, no. Hang on, I'm struggling to, darn it.
If it's
There hasn't been any. Oh, let's see. That's okay. Sorry, guys. I'm having to having to drive a lot today.
I think we all have the operational plan. Does anybody not have access to it?
No changes have been made.
Okay. Any discussion on the operations plan? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one operational plan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the operation twenty twenty-one operational plan.
So just technically, I'm chiming in a little since Hillary Graham isn't with us, and we have her lovely associate. We are voting on approving a resolution adopting the operational plan.
Okay, so the motion is to approve a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-one operational plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Who 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 moved it?
Mr. Wecker.
Okay, and the second was Brad?
Sorry, Blake moved it. Hugo second.
All right, thank you. Okay, so there is a motion to approve the resolution adopting the twenty twenty-one operational plan. Member Gallegos. Member Calvert.
Yes.
Member Nixon.
Yes.
Member Reinhardt.
Yes.
Chair Zerkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sierra.
Yes.
The motion is passed.
Okay, so now we will move into the public hearing for four B, the twenty twenty-one budget. Madam Secretary, can you confirm that notice was published as required?
Yes, notice was published on May twentieth in the Inglewood Herald.
Okay, then I will go ahead and open the public hearing at four twelve P M for comments related to the budget. Are there members of the public here who wish to testify? I don't see anyone. So no one is present to comment, so I will close the public hearing at four twelve P M.
Point of information for the chair?
Yes.
I guess this would be for the city attorney Harvey, or sorry. Yeah, so Attorney Harvey, do we have to do we have to vote on opening the public hearing in this case?
Uh, I mean, I guess it's kind of we've had some clients that do, some clients that don't. I mean, if it's the typical practice of the city to make to open it, then
Can I can I chime in, Merrill? Because I had a conversation with Hillary Graham about this for a while and with the city, and so it's just been a practice. It's not required.
Okay.
You not have to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's some some clients do it as a motion and some some don't. So if if that's the practice, then that's fine.
Perfect. Works for me.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will now turn the discussion over to the board. Is there any discussion on the twenty twenty-one budget? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-one budget?
I move that we adopt the twenty twenty-one budget as laid out by Hillary.
Second.
I think we need the word resolution. Is that what Merrill's gonna say?
If I can just clarify, it is a motion to approve the resolution adopting the budget with Exhibit A Incorporated.
You can certainly read the the title of the resolution, too, if that makes it easier. So it'd be a motion to approve a resolution and then kind of read the the title.
Correct.
So Merrill, are you able to state the motion for clarity for us?
Yeah, yes, happy to. So the motion to approve a resolution of the E DDA adopting a twenty twenty-one budget, making appropriations therefore, and submitting the same to the city. And the budget for twenty twenty-one is attached as Exhibit A. So does someone move the motion?
I move we accept what Merrill just said.
Okay.
And I second it.
Was that, who was that?
This is Blake.
Okay. Okay. So now we will vote on the resolution that I previously read. Okay, member Gallegos.
Yes.
Member Calvert.
Yes.
Member Nixon.
Yes.
Member Reinhardt.
Yes.
Member Zerkey.
Yes.
Member Weinberger.
Yes.
And councilmember Sierra.
Yep.
The motion is passed.
Okay, new business. Is there any new business?
There is not.
Okay, we will move to Director's Choice, Hillary.
I got all kinds of new business. Hang on a minute.
It's all under Director's Choice.
So I wanted to sort of give you guys an update on how our workflow is is sort of shaking out for the year. I've I've got our tasks under each each part of our mission, so administrative, marketing, placemaking, economic development. In June, we will be preparing for city council to learn about and and we hope approve our intergovernmental agreement, our twenty twenty-one plan about plan and budget, the TIF increment proposal that we will first come to you with, and a proposal for debt authorization. Sorry. It took that long to pull the budget up from that document. That was weird. I was trying I was trying to pull our budget up for you guys to see on the screen when we were discussing, but it kept spooling. We have a website launching on June seventh, and I'll send you all all the link when that happens. It's www.inglewooddowntown.com. I'd like to reach out to a few of you to do just a couple of real short testimonial videos on why you're serving on the board, your vision for downtown, and why moving forward, you know, with with boldness is necessary, like, the time is right, as we just learned from Mark in terms of really taking advantage of tax increment that's being generated on the near near-term horizon. We have an e-newsletter that goes to over six hundred downtown commercial property and business owners and another three hundred residents. So we'll be sending one out on a monthly basis. The next one will go out later in June. I've got budget for four print newsletters to go to every property owner, business owner, and resident in the downtown district. The first one is getting packaged up to to mail later this month. We'll be introducing all of you. And in all of this communication, the 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 place we're at right now in our communication sort of phasing is what is the DDA? What what is its mission? Who's on the board? What's it currently working on and where's it heading? Okay. I'd like to start doing some open houses, one in each of our sub-areas in late June and July, where we can really, you know, deliver flyers to all the business owners in the vicinity and and have a chance to come together for kind of a DDA one-on-one covering the who are we, what are we doing, and where are we heading topic, and and really trying to start that educational process about tax increment and utilization of debt. Since it's such a complicated topic, we need to email it. We need to send it in a print newsletter. We need to talk about it in 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 open house formats, but also small group formats. And I would like for each of you to think about, you know, could you convene five, six, seven other business owners in a small group setting where we could we could cover all those topics and have sort of an informal atmosphere to ask questions and make sure people people who have concerns are heard, and we can answer those questions as well. So I'm going to be tapping on you, one for the for these small testimonial videos and two to help me get with small groups to talk about the the DDA. And I'll do it to individuals, too. If if you know people you think need to be briefed and need that one-on-one contact, I'm happy to set up individual meetings as well all the way through the the end of the year. We'll be submitting content to the Citizen Magazine, which comes out on a quarterly basis. So we introduced our board in the spring issue, and we'll be drafting content for the summer issue and the fall as well. Two two events coming to the downtown area that the city is organizing. One is a new Sunset Series in city center concerts toward the end of the day in the Civic Center Plaza area. The Block Party on September eighteenth, and I forgot, they're still trying to tee up a farmer's market in the medical district. Um, the block party on September eighteenth, and I forgot, um, they're still trying to tee up a, a farmer's market in the medical district area. So we have some money for events, I might need to take some of it for these open houses. But be thinking about, uh, you know, if you'd like to support one of these city events and be a sponsor. Um, and get the D D out there and a D D A out there in a hi- high visibility way. Associated with popular community events in the downtown area, um, let me know your, your thoughts on that. Um, bang the table is a new format for citizen uh engagement in public projects that the city is undertaking. We will have a bang the table page with projects that we're doing. And uh people can review plans and ask questions and, and be in touch with us on those projects as well. Got a Facebook page, um, I'm gonna start, uh, we'll, we'll populate it with all the content we're using in the other tactics. If you hear of any fun news, events, or new businesses in the downtown area, send me the info. So that I can kind of get, get, get the word out there on social media that downtown is recovering and uh getting more dynamic every week. We are a finalist for an industry award. Um, Downtown Colorado Inc. represents communities across the state that are involved in downtown revitalization and district uh efforts. Our uh Inglewood Downtown Plan is a finalist for the best plan. And uh they have an event tomorrow evening where they're going to be announcing the winners, so uh stay tuned on that. Uh, it sure would be nice to uh start out with some of our public communications about uh winning that award. But certainly being a finalist is, is um a good thing to talk about as well. We're gonna, yeah.
That's a, a quick question about that. Um, when you go to register, if you don't want to pay, there's some code to enter if you're one of the nominees. So if anyone wants that, um, you have that, right Hillary?
I do not have a code to enter, I asked them for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'll ask again, and if I can get it, I'll send it out to you guys.
Thanks.
Yep, um. We will do our first uh district cleanup um later, later this month and again in the fall. What we have money for is um basically addressing our main streets. So um sending out a crew on South Broadway and Old Hampton. Who will focus not on street maintenance, the city does street maintenance. What we're focusing on, on is enhanced maintenance of the sidewalk area, uh sweeping grit out of the gutters. Uh, addressing any spots on the sidewalk with spray washing, taking care of any graffiti, picking up trash. Um, the, the gritty things, um, little things really matter in this work. And I want to show that the D D A is paying attention to the big things as well as the little things. Plus, it's a, it's a visible effort to improve things for downtown businesses, welcome people back to downtown. Um, we have our.
Question about that?
Yeah.
Is that, um, you're paying, we're paying people to do that, is that in a um volunteer opportunity? Can you just say a little bit more about that, please?
No, um, I've worked with a vendor called Front Range Services. And um if you guys want to entertain different bids, um, when, when our arrangement changes. And the D D A is contracting out services, we can, but Front Range does a lot of maintenance services for districts all over the metro area. I've worked with them on East Colfax and know them well, and I know that they do good work and in a timely manner. So my, my, my plan would be to just bring them on to do these two cleanups and then we can talk about what you, what you think.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay, I want to show you something else. Um, the C dot Main Street Grant goes in tomorrow, and it's for enhancing. The, let me, let me show you. Kinda, I don't know, one moment. Aha, okay, so C dot is, is awarding federal funds right now. Um, both to districts and to municipalities. So we're teaming up with Inglewood Public Works on, on two grant applications. This one is for, for the, the D D A to apply for, we can apply for up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city has allocated another fifty thousand to it, so we've got local matching funds. And it really addresses one of the um highlighted projects in the downtown plan. Which is um making this crosswalk more visible and, and safer. And enhancing the west and the east uh passeos. Um, and it's really based directly on uh feedback we got during fieldwork during the downtown planning effort. Where um businesses in the area pointed out uh what they, what they saw as uh deterrence. Uh, lack of lighting, uh, a feeling of, of not being safe on the, on the crosswalk. Um, no, no bike racks, uh, not enough trash cleanup, things like that. So we're proposing uh bicycle parking, some enhanced paving, potentially some pave, uh, some planters. Low water, uh, native plantings, and uh maybe even some marquee lights over the top. I think there's another photo here, yeah, so this is from the alley. Right, down the, the west side of the paseo. So you have Zomo over here and uh Brewability over here. And then adding in some bicycle racks, some beautification elements, some overhead lighting. And then on the west, excuse me, the east side of the street. So this is the, the east side, there would be bicycle parking, uh, refreshed landscape, some new lighting. It's kind of dark over there at night, when you're, when you park in that public parking lot here. And then walk over here to get, to get to uh restaurants and, and, and bars over here. This is kind of a dark walk and um customers were, were talking about that to the businesses. Um. The existing pergolas could be repainted, so they're more consistent with the new wayfinding master plan. Which we also need to bring before this body. Um, the city has a new uh signage and wayfinding program and a color palette to go with it. So we want to make sure that any enhancements we invest in are aligned with that wayfinding master plan. Um, so this is a refresh, um, it adds uh mobility enhancements. It adds some safety enhancements to the crosswalk, all of those are criteria for this grant opportunity. Down the street, Public Works is going to be proposing um an up, it, they can go, they can propose for up to two million dollars. For real construction work, okay, it's a different pot of money. Um, in order to build the long-planned but never-built um crosswalk at, at the Gothic Theater across Broadway. And um overhead marquee lights over Broadway in between that Gothic crosswalk and this installation. So together, we have this whole vibrant kind of downtown district. By leveraging all the funds that we have available to us. Um, so knock on wood, um, i- if either of these happen, there will be opportunities for the board to get involved. And um weigh in on, on different choices. Uh, nothing's set in stone, but we have, we have to at least put a proposal on the table in order to secure the grant funding. So that's that one, and then I think that was the last thing, sorry, I don't want to talk too much here. Yeah, that was the last thing on the work plan. Um. In June, we wanted to have our first in-person meeting. And um Hugo and I were talking about having it in his building. And going up on the roof and showing you guys kind of the aerial view of the city center property. And then having a presentation on uh what is, what is the city center master plan and the latest in that planning effort. He, he needs to be out of town, um.
Yeah, it's not set in stone, but I, I have something that could take me away from Denver, middle of that week. And I'd hate to have to have everyone shift gears. I can definitely make uh our date available for our July meeting and make sure that I don't have any other conflicts. That I, I will for sure be in town and could host.
So we'll, we'll, we'll bump that to July, if that's okay with you guys. Um, Blake, I, I was wondering if, if you guys would be comfortable of uh hosting us for June. We'd probably have some information about those grant proposals and we'd be right there at Street View.
Yeah, we'd be absolutely happy to host, we've got a, a room that can seat about eighteen people. So we plenty, have plenty of capacity and even have screens that we could display stuff also.
Wonderful, okay, well, we'll be in touch on logistics then for June. And then um the last item I just wanted to introduce, and Erica really is taking the lead here. Is that the city is considering um rescinding the COVID response emergency order. And the temporary uh adaptations that were allowed under it for local businesses. And that includes the outdoor patio expansion program and the uh outdoor consumption entertainment district. Um, policy, Erica would like to talk to the board about advocating on behalf of those two things. And extending them or even making them permanent. So Erica, you want to take it from here?
Sure, so not to be too redundant with what you just said, but I think we have a real key opportunity for the D D A board to weigh in. On something that affects a lot of our businesses, particularly the bars and restaurants in the D D A area. Um, when the pandemic hit, the city put in place some adaptations um to help bars and restaurants survive. When we weren't allowed to have people indoors, um, so that's expanded patios, the use of fire pits. So when it's cold outside, um, previously there was a prohibition on open flame heaters, now we're allowed to have open flames. Um, and the entertainment district, which means people can take their drinks out of their alcoholic beverages off of a licensed premise. And enjoy them on the sidewalk, so if they're walking from the Gothic to uh Ricos, they can enjoy a drink along the way. Um. They did this, so, and that's been super helpful, for those of you that don't own bars and restaurants, sorry. I live right by the hospital and there's a really loud helicopter right now, I apologize if you can hear that. Um, it's been really, really helpful in achieving, advancing the D D A priorities. It's made areas feel cleaner and safer, it's made the city more vibrant and inviting. Um, for example, I'll use my own business as an example, we have an alley patio now. Um, in that alley, it was dumpsters, drugs, dirtiness. Now we have twinkling lights, a bunch of tables, plants, and people enjoying that space at all hours of the day. Even like during lunchtime when we're not even open, people will go and sit there. Or people at the hair salon next door will sit back there now, it's just a much more inviting use of the alley. Um, and there are patios all over the city and all over downtown that didn't exist before, that do now. Um, and it's just been really helpful, not just for the businesses to recover, because we can expand our volume. But also in making the city more vibrant, so I think that the, it's a really good position for the D D A to take. To support the, the continuation of these efforts, so they did all of this through an emergency order. Um, now that we're clearly not in a state of emergency any longer, they want to rescind, city council wants to rescind the emergency order. Which is great, um, however, when they rescind this order, all of those provisions that I just talked about go away immediately. Unless they codify those provisions, so they have to put it into city code to make it legal without the emergency order. Um, staff is working, I think city staff is working on writing proposed ordinances for council to consider, to put those into place permanently. At their meeting on June seventh, and Mayor Protim, please correct me if I get any of this wrong. Um, but I believe that they'll be able to consider those at the same time that they are considering rescinding the emergency orders. Um, there's some timing issues regarding state legislation, particularly with the entertainment districts. But I believe, fingers crossed, there's been some shenanigans on that bill, but I think it's going to pass this week. So it should, the time, the stars should align, so the city can do this together. Um, so uh several businesses before the D D A had been able to meet, several businesses reached out to city council. And the chamber is always a great voice for businesses all over the city. And I thought it might be a really good opportunity for the D D A to speak up on behalf of the businesses within the D D A boundaries. And just say, we think this is a really good idea in advancing the priorities of the D D A. Um, so I would recommend that we, as a board, if we all agree on this, give Hillary uh the direction. To send a letter to council prior to their June seventh meeting, just saying the D D A is one hundred percent behind this. So, any thoughts or questions about any of that?
Sir Erica, do you mind if I just jump in in?
Please do.
Thanks, so I think, so originally when we knew that this day would come, I reached out to the chamber. And obviously the chamber reached out to uh area uh businesses. The two that I heard about the most that would affect businesses was the entertainment district going away, as well as the uh outdoor seating. Uh, provision, uh, but the third one, I did also hear about the propane heaters as well, so I wouldn't limit it just to those two. Um, I believe Hillary, you stated, I believe at, at first it was just those two that you stated, but just because we're getting into warmer weather. Um, I still feel that there's a benefit for having the propane heaters there, I think it did benefit some businesses. I did hear from a few businesses that were in favor for that, so uh at least from my perspective, and I've, I've mentioned this during the last city council meeting. If we were to rescind the emergency order, uh, I will be in favor of it if it does. Uh, basically, if, if, if any businesses are, are gonna get affected by this delay. Where, you know, there may be a two-week delay or a one-month delay in them being able to have that outdoor seating again. I, I won't be in favor of that, these have to be concurrently voted on and, and without any type of del- delay for businesses. So that's where I stand, but I'm one of seven members, and I think obviously the uh D D A uh speaking on behalf of. Uh, you know, providing a letter in support, I think would be a benefit to uh city council.
Mayor Protim, do you have any insight into how, where the other council members stand on this?
I, uh, I don't, not base, I haven't spoken to anybody individually based, I, I'm basically just going off of the discussion that we had at the. What meeting was that, was that the third? Uh, I think it was the, the meeting on the third, at the very end of the meeting, uh, we discussed it. But no, I haven't spoken to other members, but I do think it potentially could be a four-three vote of rescinding the emergency order.
What's the pushback, what, are they just saying we only did this because of this and now this is gone, or what, what's the, what's the pushback?
So from the, what I can understand, yes, it's, it's based on the fact that we're no longer in an emergency. So stating that we are, um, I think is, and I, I do agree with that sentiment, that it's pretty disingenuous in this spec. Since we have been opened up and a lot of businesses are back at a hundred percent, but we did put a lot of, we did do a lot during these, this past year. That, that ha- did help the businesses in the area and for that, for us to just take it away immediately without thinking about how that could affect their business. Especially the outdoor seating aspect during the summer, um, I think, you know, I, I, I just don't think that that's going to benefit small business.
And would people have to take down their patios?
Basically, you wouldn't be able to use patios, so yeah, the, the patios would not, uh, you wouldn't be able to use the patio space that were allowed as part of the ordinance. Uh, the entertainment district will go away and you wouldn't be able to use the, the portable heaters either, so that would go away. Uh, and that would go away as a, um, I, I think it would rescind immediately. Uh, and you could correct me if I'm wrong on that, Attorney Harvey.
No, you're correct.
You know, it's also um a way to support local business over the long term as the area changes and grows. And we want our, our local businesses to um rise with the tide, as it were. And many of them are located on very small or constrained lots on, on corridors. And they have very little um interior space, so providing a little extra outside space allows them to expand. And uh bring in more revenue over time.
I, I think that if there's anything learned over COVID and some positive takeaways, it is things like this for small business. Um, that benefits the business and benefits the customer and pedestrian, it makes things nicer, longer term. And I think it's interesting that the city could vote this away and it like pulls the rug out like that day. Um, I don't think that they would do that, at least I, I hope that's not the sentiment. And I think us m- making a recommendation sounds in line with what our goal is of, of kind of being, being around.
I know for us being an employer, I mean, I've had many employees, I mean, some that do live in the Inglewood area and that can walk to work. It's definitely, they've enjoyed it, but even those that, that do commute in and use all the services nearby. They've thought that those changes that were made were some of the most unique qualities to locate our. Getting a little bit, uh, unique qualities to locate our office in the. getting a little bit, unique qualities to locate our office in the area. So I'd be worried that that's going to be a, not only for the businesses, but also for the city because they think the uniqueness of Erica's path stare at when we walk out the back of our building every day, and she's got the lights on, we're like, hmm, maybe we want to go a few doors down to sit at Brewability or Inglewood Grand or and go get something to eat. And it really does, when people see it, they want to come into these inviting spaces. So it'd be a real shame, because I know it's affecting us, and our employees are talking about it. And we're just now getting ready to go to full capacity in about a week.
I agree with that. I think it's really energized that area and been great for our employees. And from the health side, we know it's healthier to be outside. So why are we going to push people back in?
Okay, so it sounds like we have consensus for Hillary for you to write a letter on behalf of the DDA. And if any of you have the inclination, you can always comment publicly or send a letter on your own or on behalf of your own business to the council as well. They'll be discussing it on June 7th. Hillary, did you have anything else on director's choice?
I sure don't.
Okay, we'll move to board members' choice. Anyone want to share anything? Okay.
Oh, I have one thing. Sorry, couldn't find the unmute. So I just wanted to say, in speaking with some of our fellow businesses the last couple of weeks as the as we've gotten going, I think there's a number of potential voters that did not follow the process to vote last time, more tenant-owned people. And so I'm thrilled to hear about those outreach that you're thinking about doing, Hillary. The more we can tap into some of that unknown that is probably pro EDDA, I think we should do that. So glad to see that those are on the list and planned.
Yeah, if you're aware of any folks who have questions or conversations you've been having or a little a little group that wasn't quite sure, you know, last year, let's reach directly out to them and just start having those conversations. I'll have the first newsletter that's in production now. We're going to overprint so we can use it as kind of a, you know, a meeting piece. And that'll help you guys as well when when you're having conversations with folks.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so now we'll do recognition of public comment. Is there anyone, do we have to vote to open public comment? Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Great evening.